All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here today for this work session meeting. At our last meeting, we presented the recommendations and the council had the opportunity to review those and decide whether they were ready for public comment. And of course, they did go out for public comment, as you know. That comment closed on February 20th. And today, we're going to have a chance for staff to go through summaries of the feedback with us. And also, ODE will be giving us a summary as well. And so our purpose really today is just to review the feedback that we've received and discuss some of the recommendations that were acquired through that feedback. So with that, I will turn it over to co-chair Gardner.
Thank you so much. Good to see everybody back. So we're going to hear today initially from the staff who've worked really, really hard to review and compile all the feedback we've received of those 77 responses to date. And so first, we're going to hear from Kristen Ref from TSPC, and then we're going to hear from Ken Greenbaum from ODE. So first up, turn it over to Kristen.
Hi. Yeah, so I have a document. I think most of you have seen this. Hopefully, it probably came through your email on Friday. So Erin, Ken, and I spent a good deal of time really trying to dig into the comments and kind of provide just a high-level summary. I trust also that you've dug into the comments yourself and have been able to pull themes of your own. And so just understand that this is just a really high-level overview of some of the deeper discussions you're going to have later. So yeah, so a public feedback window opened on January 25th, closed on February 20th. Overall, there were 77 responses. Two came via email, just a written document, and 75 came via the survey. Here's an overview of the roles that were represented. As we all know, a lot of these folks participate in dual roles. So there's educator preparation program faculty that are also parents, also K-12 administrators. And so a lot of this is overlapping, but with the big categories being EPP faculty, parent-child or caregiver, or either current or past K-12 staff. So those are the big categories, as well as members of the public participated as well. So Erin, Ken, and I took all of the comments and pulled out some qualitative themes and then grouped those themes to larger categories. You know, we're not really qualitative researchers. Well, Erin is, but the rest of us just tagged along. But trying to pull out some of those overarching themes, primarily breaking them down into four areas. One is support for educator preparation programs. Two is equity and cultural competency. Three are language and structure change recommendations. And then the last one would be this broad systemic needs. And I'll talk a little bit about how we defined those things down here in a little bit. So for theme one, we pulled out any of the feedback that talked about needs that we need to support educator preparation programs. So it talked about educator prep implementation, accountability, how are things going to be monitored? How are things going to be measured? And then talking about, do we have the capacity to actually do this in our programs? Some of the smaller programs may not have the faculty or staff. How are we going to train the faculty and staff that we do have? And so that all got summarized here into support for EPPs. And so about 68 of the comments included something about that we need to better support EPPs to implement these. And so I pulled out some sample sentiments from the feedback, but you can go back through the feedback also and pull out those themes. Theme two is around equity and cultural competency. There were also some around student voice and student choice. And so there were 15 responses around equity and cultural competency and the desire to better center primarily multilingual learners and students with disabilities. There were a few that mentioned things like love of reading, that students need to be motivated to learn to read, and talking a little bit about broadly that love of reading. And so there are some of those sample sentiments there for that category. Theme three was around any sort of specific recommendations on language changes. There were a few that really broke down the standards by page number, recommended language changes. And so the council can consider some of those pieces of feedback. Or some of them are also around structural changes, moving things around or whether a category was missing. And so there were 62 responses that included some sort of specific language change or a structural change recommendation. And then this last category, I just called broad systemic needs. And so it talked a lot about anything around the handoff from pre-service to in-service, how teachers are going to be supported, how we're supporting K-12 institutions. And then also encompassed some of those other areas like concerns around the council's composition, concerns around the scope of the council, and then just other, anything that was systemic or structural barriers to implementing the standards that didn't necessarily fall into EPP scope. And so there were 55 responses in that general area of broad systemic needs. So I think that's it on this document, and so I'll stop sharing. And I think that we're going to have time for a deep conversation, but any superficial questions about the document in particular, before I think we're handing it off to Ken after. And I see you have a question. You're on mute.
So people gave input, and some of them were about the actual ability to carry it out and implement it. And some were about the actual content. And I think we do have to keep in mind that we were given a mission in terms of judgment originally on the standards, that they would be research and evidence-based. For example, something like, I wish it would more talk about the love of reading. Oh, actually, the research shows that the more skilled you are, the more probable it is that you're going to love it. That you don't love comes as a result of the standards. It isn't something that we can directly promote first. So I would think that we have to be careful from the very get-go that we are still responding to the initial general commission that we were given in terms of research validated practices. That was just my thought as I was reading through this. So I will wait until we get through the second one, but I do think that that's a critical thing to keep in mind, that the goal here is not to formulate just belief systems, but to formulate based on what would be the considered across the country and across our state. And I actually had the great gift. I'm in Hawaii, visiting a school, visiting classes. And one teacher was absent today at 11 o'clock, which is 1:00 there, a total gift. So I get to be in the meeting. I'm so thankful. Thanks, Kristin. When I read it, I said, my guy, a statistician or a budding statistician. Good job.
Yeah, amazing.
Yeah, any other questions about the document? I know we'll have some time to deep dive into the content, but just wanting to answer any other superficial questions before I hand it off to Ken. Awesome. All right, Ken.
All right. Thank you, Kristen. And good afternoon, everyone. Thanks again. And again, ODE, we are asked to provide a review of the draft standards to align with the early literacy framework as directed by the executive order. And again, before we dive in, just wanted to echo the appreciation, both I think mentioned earlier today at the previous meetings, just for the tremendous work that has gone into these recommendations. I know I've been a part of the journey and seeing them evolve, and it has just personally for me was wonderful. Again, it's like dive into them, particularly as they pertain to the alignment of the framework. So with that, we're just overall, and I'll share my screen here in a moment to dive into the analysis document, but just want to share that the draft recommendations overall are mostly aligned with the framework. Kind of talk about how we qualified that, but just want to lead with that. And there's nothing in the recommendations that are antithetical to the early literacy framework, I think, which is no surprise. And just have some recommendations from ODE staff here of how to perhaps bring the recommendations into stronger alignment. But again, mostly aligned with the early literacy framework. With that, I'm going to share my screen and make sure. And can you see the ODE analysis document? Wonderful. I see some thumbs up. And again, similar to Kristen, if you have clarifying questions as we go, I'll pause a little bit as well. I'll talk through this document a little bit first, just around how we approached this, and then also dive a little bit into some of the detailed feedback and recommendations. And then just check in with the group, see if it'd be easier to read through the rest independently for a moment to synthesize. And then we can dive back in. And welcome to some additional council members who have joined us. With that, in terms of the purpose and scope of this analysis, we analyzed and provided feedback, not on all the standards, but the ones you see here, really sections three through eight, so the dispositions, the five standards. What we didn't provide analysis of is the purpose, scope, and field experiences of the standards, just because that wasn't quite in the purview of the analysis or alignment with the framework. Really, the closest relation in areas for analysis of alignment were the standards. So just want to frame that upfront. We didn't look at alignment between purpose, scope, and field experiences. Wasn't really a one-to-one for comparison there. As I mentioned, overall, the recommended standards are mostly aligned with the content of early literacy framework. We'll talk about what that means in a moment. And really, just the standards speak to, as a whole, to what educator practices are necessary to really uplift early literacy statewide as the framework speaks to those. Again, there are no sections that were not yet aligned, and we think that some minor adjustments or additions would bring recommendations into strong alignment with the framework. And there's three themes that came out that you'll see here in a moment, really just some places to speak around supports for multilingual learners, this idea of standards for student belonging, culturally responsive practice that are literacy-specific, and the role of formative assessment and assessment literacy. Real quick on the method, we looked at each section in this qualitative way around not yet aligned, mostly aligned, and strongly aligned with this idea of, okay, if an EPP were to implement this set of standards, would it be antithetical? Would it mostly support or even accelerate? So that's how we looked at it. There's a granularity factor here, that the framework is a 70-page document with lots of information in a detailed way, and the standards are certainly, and rightfully so, more distilled and succinct. So that's how we approached it. It's not quantitative, one-to-one, didn't really make sense. So we looked at it with these prompts in mind, so that just gives you a sense of what we mean by not yet, mostly, or strongly. Again, we gave the overall mostly-aligned analysis, and we think with some of the recommendations we put forth here, that would move as a whole the recommendations into strongly aligned. And if you're curious as to the section-by-section alignment, happy to provide that as well. But for brevity, didn't include the section-by-section overall analysis. So with that, the next few pages here are some really specific ideas or feedback recommendations on the recommendations, if you will. And we really aim to make these specific to support the council in determining or thinking about how to include these. So we wanted to come forth with some really specific language, hence the detail. And yeah, so I'll talk through these, give some context. I'll pause after dispositions here to see what makes most sense, to allow them to dive in, or I can keep walking through. Really important here, if you see text that's just in plain text, that would be something new to add. It doesn't really exist yet, written in that way in the current recommended standards. Anything in italics is an existing standard with the green being a revision. So we tried to be clear and distinguish in that way.
Ken, would you mind zooming in just a bit? I see some folks straight, maybe a little bit more.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You have to give me a moment, because my...
I think it's the bottom right magnifying glass.
How's that?
Thank you.
So for the dispositions, a few recommendations we have is that generally the framework speaks to additional practices or ideas around student belonging and culturally responsive practice. That's the entirety of section one, as you know. And there are some referenced OARs or administrative rules in the early part of the standards. And while those are generally aligned to this idea of culturally responsive practice and student belonging, we think that elevating some additional educator dispositions related specifically to literacy or framed in that way would, again, bring the dispositions into stronger alignment with the framework. These are three in particular, we think, would capture those ideas. The third also found in the framework, but also was part of, I think, some of the discussion earlier that the council had around this idea, particularly around honoring Indigenous language and identity around literacy instruction. So these would be three to consider in disposition, in addition to those OARs referenced, I think, in the purpose or scope in the recommendations. For standard one, knowledge of literacy acquisition and instruction. So there's two subsections, as you know, literacy acquisition and instruction. This idea of elevating multilingual learner and students with disabilities, adding this either generally to this section, this understanding how each of the above concepts, the above concepts within the context of the recommendations refers to all the things named within that section, applies to those two focal student groups. This is something the framework attempts to do as well, both throughout and in a specific section, elevate the needs of those groups. And so we think that's one way to do so. In literacy acquisition, this revision is... So in another body of work, we've received some legal counsel to not refer to guidance within rule, because you're referring to a non-legally binding document within a legally binding document. So we tried to generalize that. So there were two places where the framework was specifically mentioned. This is just some language to generalize that, and other ways of doing that. But where Oregon literacy framework was named, that's something perhaps TSPC can also weigh in on in the specific language of the rules. But that's really a technical change. And regarding understand the most common intrinsic differences, we recommend removing the word intrinsic just to emphasize that a student's reading ability is not fixed. And with effective instruction, all students can learn to be skilled readers, while still acknowledging that there are very specific student needs, as is emphasized in the parenthetical. So that's our recommendation around that specifically. I'm going to pause there and just check in. I'm happy to keep going bullet by bullet or allow time for the group to read through, and we can elevate any clarifying questions through discussions. I'll look to the co-chairs to make that determination. I'm happy either way.
Ken, it's very thoughtful. Thank you. I like bullet by bullet, because I'm learning from you.
Generally seeing some thumbs up there, so I would say, Ken, press forward unless Co-chair Fritz has other thoughts.
No, I think this is great.
Okay. I will try to move briskly, so it's not all me talking. But again, please interrupt with a clarifying question. Also, under instruction, so the two non-italicsized, these would be new standards to consider. They, again, elevate culturally responsive instruction, particularly as it speaks to the selection of high-quality texts and what that means for what students are reading. That's emphasized very much in the first section of the framework. And then the second bullet point around background knowledge, that's something that's emphasized, certainly in the standards and also in the framework in section six. And just elevating that there is an equity consideration when knowing that the importance of background knowledge, but also understanding and acknowledging, well, whose knowledge, and being aware of educator experience, the role that plays. So that's elevating that idea in that section under instruction.
Ken, can you be certain that we are looking at what you're talking about?
Can I highlight that? Does that make sense?
That would make a lot of sense. Thank you, dear.
No, thanks for the feedback. All right, I'm going to move on to this bullet point. A small change here, we recommend using the language of supplemental instructional materials as opposed to only core and intervention. That is more consistent with the language we're using, both in the framework and other areas of literacy policy, in that supplemental is a bit broader than only intervention, and that it would be important to analyze instructional materials in both those frameworks or ideas of the role of materials, including this idea of the distinction between core and supplemental, the role they play, and the policies thereof. So somewhat of a technical change, but to come in more alignment of how the department is speaking about those ideas. I'll move on to standard two. I'm going to talk about these three in oral language. So the framework speaks to two elements or ideas around oral language. Certainly, the role that oral language plays in language development and laying the groundwork for foundational skills, which the recommended standards speak to. We think the second way, and this is why we'd recommend these three, that the framework speaks to oral language, is the role in identity and culture, and how important that is as well in the role of oral language. So these are the three bullets that we think speak to that. One, really emphasizing the primary role oral language plays in laying the groundwork for a child's ability to read and write, and the role of oral language, both around identity, culture, belonging, and this idea of language varieties and dialects and educator knowledge in the equity implications and knowledge around what that means for early literacy instruction.
Can I just clarify? So the bullets come from the framework document?
Either verbatim, or we synthesize them from ideas in the framework. Again, there's like, say, four pages on oral language. We've tried to distill or pull from that the idea that perhaps would make sense and amplify or complement what's in the council's recommended standards.
So Ken, as we start to consider these, we should be able to look to the framework and the citations and references used to find the evidence for those. Because like Anita said, we always want to be circling back to this idea of evidence-based. So we should be able to find those citations in the framework, correct?
Correct. And if not for that specific sentence, that section of ideas, but correct.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Can I get a little clarification, Ken? Now, these are not suggestions based on the feedback from other people. This is based on you're looking at the framework and seeing what might be missing. Is that correct?
Correct. This was done independent of the public feedback that Kristen spoke to, so completely independent. And yes, we were looking at alignment. I don't think...
So we get to review these to see if we want to add them, because it's adding a lot more bullets. And people were saying it's getting awfully long. And so this is suggestions. It is not absolute. So we're still going to be looking at it as a committee? I'm just trying to make a grasp here of its intentionality.
Yeah, so what we did is, separate from the public feedback, we looked for, and I want to clarify a little bit, we didn't go in looking for what was missing from the standards. We did analysis of alignment. So where is there alignment, where there was mostly strong alignment, as I mentioned, and where could we come to more alignment? And so what this does is make recommendations on, for example, if you were to add or change what we've proposed here, we believe that would bring the recommended standards into stronger alignment with the framework. From a process perspective, I might ask perhaps Pusha to speak to that, but my understanding is this would be for the council's consideration.
Council's consideration. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I mean, to underscore, the governor's charge to this council was to create recommendations that align with the Oregon early literacy framework. So yes, this is independent of the public feedback, and this is part of why the governor really wanted to make sure that the framework was referenced in the executive order. But it is up for you all to take this and figure out, what do you want to integrate into the next version?
Okay. I guess I'll continue then. All right. Phonological awareness. Apologies for the page break. So we're on this one here. This was a slight revision to the current language. It just brings, well, we were a slightly more asset-based way of expressing the idea that was already in the standard in ways that are a bit more aligned with how phonological awareness was described in the framework. I don't think it's a substantive change, if I'm remembering correctly, but just a change in language and how that idea is written about. Generally, for this section, and when I say generally, their literacy foundational skills was broken up, I think, into five sections or so within the standards. So these, we think, might, they didn't fit in any one of those subsections, so this could be before or after, perhaps. An emphasis around explicit systematic diagnostic and responsive teaching, and just the recognition of that benefit across student needs. And then also naming a bit how these ideas support multilingual learners. And again, emphasizing that both in this section, understanding that there's another section to support multilingual learners, but elevating that in this section in this way as well.
Ken, can I ask you a question on that last one?
Yeah.
A little bit. Go back a little bit where it... So the... When it says that, when I visit the Oregon schools, it often is, they are not going to have the ability to teach in a student's native language. And so when it says you're build these skills in their native language and English, that's not always a possibility, because they have Arabic students and Chinese and Korean and so forth. So I wonder if we're going to have, that would be difficult to carry out. We do...
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So no, that was just, I guess we'll get to discuss that, to see what the possibility of that is. We do know that phonological awareness does transfer from one language to another. So if students master it in one language, that they usually have it in another language. But having schools be responsible for being able to teach it in many languages might be a problem.
I know when we discussed this, the intent was really about having resources to understand the native sounds that children bring in when they come to school, and then use that to help build the bridge, even if we're just instructing in English. So I think that that was the difference, rather than talking about native language literacy instruction. It's building the bridges. It would be great if it was a native language, but recognizing that we can still build bridges, even if it's English instruction.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Brown. I don't have more to add. Yeah, we want to elevate this with exactly that idea in mind. I'm going to move us to standard three, higher-level literacy skills. So one recommendation is to rename the section, and this is one recommendation. There's probably other iterations. And this is something we received a lot of feedback on and considered a lot, actually, in the development of the framework as well, is to not unintentionally communicate that these skills and this... communicate that these skills in this section come after or must wait for the the skills in in the prior section, the so-called foundational skills. So just a consideration, the the word higher level literacy skills might unintentionally communicate that. So this is, you know, this is actually right from the framework, this this title, but the the main piece of feedback here is to just reconsider this name to not have that unintended consequence. For background knowledge, one piece to add is the role of background knowledge along through oral language or print in students' ability to make meaning of and comprehend text. So kind of a main part of the the framework and one thing that we would think would strengthen the current recommendations. For comprehension, again, a relatively small revision to the current language that emphasizes some of the culturally responsive practices in text selection. And for writing, I believe this is a similar correction to earlier. Current recommendation refers to the early literacy framework explicitly, and it's just an effort to generalize that as to not reference a specific guidance document. Standards four. So all four of these, I won't read each one, but this is just some revisions that reflect two things. One, speaking to formative assessment in a way that's a bit more frankly, like proportional to how much the the framework leans into formative assessment. And also just some changes in language and how the framework talks about assessment as recommendations for for some of the wording and smaller visions in the current standards. I'll pause there to let you read those. In section five, regarding multilingual learners and supporting students with reading difficulties, reading disabilities, including those with dyslexia, adding in a few core ideas around supporting multilingual learners from the framework, the implications for dual immersion teaching and learning. I know that's one, kind of to Dr. Archer's earlier question around, okay, what are the implication, excuse me, implementation questions around this? And we, as it pertains to, you know, strong practice in supporting multilingual learners who want to like elevate these core ideas from the framework. Understanding the benefits of developing multilingualers home language alongside English language, language and literacy. Again, something that could also be articulated as a disposition if the council chose to go that direction. We think that's a core idea that could bring into a stronger alignment. And this idea of assets of multilingualism and how identity plays into learner experience. The last piece here, there are other revised, excuse me, administrative rule that point to universal screener. So it might be helpful under eight B three, under that current recommendation, to just reference that as is done so in in other recommendations, just so that the reader has, you know, that resource and makes that connection. And another focal student group that the framework speaks to is supporting students who are gifted and talented. So and pardon the typo, there should be a quotation mark at the end. Consider generally for the section, naming and elevating the needs of of that group as well is one place that in section eight of the framework we speak to that we thought could be added to these. That is the extent of kind of those specific examples or or feedback and recommended changes. So I'm going to stop sharing. And I'll pause there if there's clarifying questions or co-chairs, if we're going to shift into a deeper discussion, happy to continue to answer questions throughout the meeting.
Immediately, I just want to thank you both, Kristen and Ken, for thoughtful, thoughtful work on this and looking at what the feedback was, but also the alignment. I was mightily impressed. So thank you very much for that effort.
Just another quick question. I didn't say that in our email. Has that been sent to us?
It should have gone Friday. Alex, can you confirm?
I've got three other documents, but not this one, I believe.
I'll double check, but I do believe that all of those were sent out.
And we can send it, we will send it out just in case for sure after the meeting. You have it. Yeah.
It'll be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. So I think Co-Chair Fritz, do you want to take on the discussion and have us kind of create space and breakouts for people to kind of process and make meaning of this is a lot of information and that's why we wanted to offer this as a optional break, you know, more time for you to deep dive on this. So Co-Chair Fritz, what do you think?
Yeah, I think this would be a great time to break into some breakout rooms and really just have some discussion on our initial thoughts about the feedback we've received so far from both ODE and the public comment and start to formulate some ideas about next steps of revision and that that sort of thing. So if we could get into a couple of rooms, I think that would be a great next step.
Great. And Alex, I think you have those breakouts.
Yes, I will launch those now.
And just got confirmation, if you have a timestamp at six thirteen on Friday, I think this email. Is it Thursday or Friday, Kristen? That that email went Friday. Okay, but we will send it out just in case because there was a lot of documents. There was a correction. So we want to make sure everybody has this. So thanks for that. Okay, so we'll spend how much time in breakouts here really right before closing, so about two twenty two twenty-five. So we'll have plenty of time and you'll have staff to help take notes as well.
Welcome back, everyone. I don't know about you, but we were deep in it still. I didn't, I thought that was going to be plenty of time, but I felt like we had we didn't get to talk about everything we wanted to. We did have some great conversations. We we approached it in our room as from the ODE document and started walking our way through that and talking through. And I think we had some really great conversations about adding in some of those sections. So I think we're going to have some good discussion at our next meeting as well. Susan, do you want to talk about maybe what your group discussed?
We talked about a million different things, which was really energizing, but perhaps a little overwhelming. I think, and and folks from from that breakout room jump in because I actually wasn't taking notes because I was so enthralled in the conversation. But I think we, you know, we talked, we started, I think, with the ODE recommendations. We talked a little bit about, you know, the connection between the framework and and how they were translated and to the work we did. We started talking about things like implementation. There was a good amount of conversation about implementation with even a recommendation, do we maybe want to subgroup to start kind of thinking ahead about that? So when we get to that phase and our our deadline, maybe we're a little more prepared. We also talked a little bit about, and this is probably my fault, well, then we talked a little bit about, you know, the the comments that we got around is this the expectation for brand new, you know, initial preliminary license folks? And maybe can we think about additional, almost a developmental centered standards for folks who are getting their license to renewal and how do we build in some things that ESDs or school districts can help and provide? And do we see any models of that kind of phased in? And then also a phased in approach. So maybe two different things. What else did I miss? We talked about dual language learners and we talked about indigenous language learners.
Sounds like about it. About it and just a drop of what it was, I'm sure, because our conversations were really rich on in our group too, and talked about some of the same things you were talking about in terms of, well, one thing that we noticed is some of the ODE recommendations, we felt like also we saw from public comment. So there was some crossover there that I think is helpful as we think about those revisions down the road. All right. Is there anything else we need to do today, Pooja?
Well, I I think that there's an opportunity to think about process between now and the next meeting. The next meeting will be a council business meeting. Alex or Kristen, do you know off the top of your head what date that is? March something?
I see March eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Okay, thank you. Ideally, at the March eighteenth meeting, we have a few things that we can do. One is to hear from TSPC's licensing team who that that's really the next deadline that you're focused on, which is recommendations around licensing, which is really building off of these recommendations for EPPs. And so Elizabeth Keller from TSPC will be able to come and speak to that because so many teachers are not prepared by Oregon Educator Preparation Program. So that's one kind of potential agenda item. And another potential agenda item is really making meaning of how are, how are you choosing to both integrate the literacy feedback that you got along with the public and EPP feedback into the next round? That's another chunk of work. Another chunk of work is around the implementation conversation that Co-Chair Gardner kind of mentioned. So and Kristen, is there anything you want to share about the TSPC piece that I missed?
No, I think that that's it. There were just some questions around licensing of out-of-state applicants, advancing to professional and professional development units, supporting school districts ESDs. All those are good questions for Elizabeth.
Right. Thanks, Julie. So I think that for next steps, I wonder if it's good for the group that kind of came up with the draft recommendations to work with the staff team, both the TSPC and the ODE to help support with the next round. And I wonder if there's another work group that is really focused on the implementation of like, how do we translate this into something that's actionable? So that's my kind of wondering out loud if there's really two groups that kind of come out of this and maybe there's an offshoot of TSPC and heck, maybe just throwing it out there where any touch points that you already have with EPPs can kind of support the implementation conversation as an additional input. So I'm just curious what your thoughts are on that.
I think that seems like the buckets of work that we have left to do. I guess I'm just not super clear how we go from this at the March eighteenth meeting, would we be voting on a set of revisions? So we need someone working on that before the eighteen? Or how does that? How would that look?
Yeah, that is one option. There is another second meeting in March that you have as well. That's another option if you if you need additional time. But ideally, you do have a group that's coming together in fairly short order and it's working between now and that March meeting on these recommendations, as well as secondarily the implementation. And staff can support kind of if you give them a charge of like, integrate this, here's what we want on that, that they can help on that front.
Okay. Co-Chair Gardner, I'm not sure, what are your thoughts on that? That step and what how we put that group, work group together?
My only concern is that obviously we didn't have our full council here today. This was our work session. And so we haven't gotten a chance to hear from the full council about their reactions to all of this feedback. So in one way, I would, I would hate to see the the subcommittee or what Julie called the sub-subcommittee. You know, go back in and then get additional feedback that somehow, you know, would make that additional work unnecessary.
Kristen put in the chat, would it be helpful for TSPC hack to create implementation ideas for the council to start with? Yeah, probably. A draft is always easier to start with than than, you know, cold. So yeah, and I think that that the implementation piece. I'm not sure until we get this part nailed down, I think we can start to think about implementation and what that might look like. But I don't know, would we have that group started before that March eighteenth meeting also? Seems like there's a lot of moving parts to make happen at once.
Yeah, one idea is that you could charge the staff with coming to you with a timeline for this implementation work to propose to you all that we can do with our agency partners in the next week to give back to the co-chairs for input. So that's one action step that we can do. And another action step is for the council members who weren't able to make it today, we can kind of see if they want to have, you know, we can encourage them to watch this recording and to weigh in in the next week or so if they want to make any kind of additional pieces of input to elevate. What I don't want to have happen is that we wait another month to go by because a few people couldn't make the meeting and then we don't have much time. That doesn't seem fair to all of you. So does that feel comfortable of our our staff can kind of follow up with the council members who weren't able to make it, to invite them to view the recording, to share input with the co-chairs about any recommended changes, but then the subgroup kind of want to work with the staff and I would, I can help to facilitate to make sure that that occurs.
So I think it would be great if you sent out not only the recording, but send them all the documents too. And then maybe they fill out a form or something with their feedback.
Yeah, okay.
Add that in to the conversation.
Yeah, okay, great. We can do that. And then we can also have the staff team come up with a plan to like how this implementation thing would roll out with EPP partners as well. Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Any last questions or ideas before we? Okay, go ahead, Co-Chair Fritz. You can close us out.
Okay, thanks for all of you showing up today. It's, it was nice to have those conversations. It is, I love what you said, Co-Chair Gardner. It is energizing to talk with people who are, you know, we we all want what's best for kids and we're hoping that we're we're on the right track, moving in that direction. So thank you to everyone